Okay. We'll now call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to the Board of Supervisors meeting for April. Just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and is being held hybrid, so we have people joining us online, including Supervisor Bill Miller, who was unable to join us tonight. So you see his face up there on the screen. Hi, Bill. What else? The meeting. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, welcome, everybody. We will go ahead and get started. First item on the agenda is the minutes from March 14th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Supervisors' March 14th, 2022 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any comment or questions from the board? Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up are the reports. Police Chief Alexander.
Go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. Treasure?
This month of March, the general thought we collected just over 24% of our budget of revenues and have spent just under 24% of our budget.
Okay, thank you. Did everybody hear that? The microphone's really tiny over there. Next up is public works.
For the month of March, the daily average flow to the Downingtown Treatment Plant was approximately 1,500,726 gallons per day. We had no new sewer connections to either the Dara or Eagleview wastewater treatment plant service areas. For the month of March, we received 3.1 inches of rain. Normal for March is about three and a half. As of March, we were still minus about a half an inch, but that's changed a lot in the beginning of April. The department responded to 143 PA1 calls for the month. We had crews out to remove debris from the guardrail on Nancy Jane at Taylor Road and cleaned out the stand pipe at the Filmon Road detention pond. We were also out doing inspections of township road signs and looking at replacing those, especially at the major intersections along 10113. The department moves out to retreat and plow the roads on March 12th and then again on March 13th to treat ice patches roadway. I sincerely hope that we're done with snow for the year, but...
I heard the ice cream man today, so I think we're good.
Regular maintenance was done and state inspections as well.
Okay, thank you. Fire marshal?
Yes, for the month of March, the building department issued 87 permits for construction activities. Total of 111 inspections were conducted. Forty-nine use and occupancy certificates were issued. Fire marshal responded to 19 incidents during working hours, as well as investigated one opened burning.
Great, thank you. Live the fire company?
For the month of March, the fire department responded to 51 incidents. Of those incidents, 21 were in Euclid, six in Upper Euclid, six in West Euclid, and 18 in other towns.
Thank you. Do we have a representative from Euclid ambulance here tonight? Nope, okay. Then do I have a motion to approve the reports?
So moved.
Second.
Any comment or questions? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, first item on the agenda under the business section. Number one, ratified letter to county commissioners regarding Hammock Inn and Suites.
So the Board of Supervisors had sent a letter to the Chester County Commissioners regarding the county's placement at the Hammock Inn of affected individuals from things like COVID, Ida, and also concerning the conditions of the Hammock Hotel. What we're doing this evening is just ratifying that letter as it was signed by all three supervisors.
Okay. Is there a motion to ratify the letter to the county commissioners regarding the Hammock Inn and Suites?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any comment from the board? No? Any comment from the public? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Next up on the agenda is a motion to authorize the solicitor to prepare and file comments to the Public Utility Commission's proposed rulemaking related to the pipeline transport of petroleum products and hazardous liquids.
I don't want to read the line item on the agenda back to you, but that is things this evening. This would be to authorize Mark, the township solicitor, to submit public comment on behalf of the township for this issue.
Would you like me to address it a little bit, the issue?
Yeah.
Sure, so the PUC, over the summer of 2021, published, or at least issued, notice of a rulemaking that was going to relate to pipelines like the Mariner Pipeline, the hazardous liquids pipelines and other types of pipelines, proposing regulations to improve and change some of the ordinances and regulations that govern that. When the Safety 7 case, when the Judge, Judge Barnes in the Safety 7 case, and that was ultimately ratified by the full Public Utility Commission, issued her opinion. She indicated that a lot of the issues that were raised in that case, in which the township was an intervenor, were to be addressed as part of the rulemaking. So now, the rulemaking was finally published in the Pennsylvania Bulletin, which triggered the the public notice period. The public notice period ends actually tomorrow. And there's a number of commoners where the township, for the most part, assuming it's approved, intends to raise really just one or two issues and incorporate a number of other comments rather than repeating comments that were already done by folks like other townships and other organizations.
Okay, thanks, Mark. So is there a motion to authorize the solicitor to prepare and file comments to the Public Utility Commission's proposed rulemaking related to the pipeline transport of petroleum products and hazardous liquids?
So moved.
Second.
Any comment from the board?
No.
Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we'd like to, is the award bid for an excavator? And I have a picture of it. If anyone wants to see that. I thought it was kind of cool.
Way more interesting than street sweeping. Staff had originally come to the board for permission to advertise for this bid. It was posted to PennBid, which is an online service for bids. And we had held an opening on March 10th at 10:00 a.m., and the low bidder was Knox Equipment at a price of $11,321. So what we're asking for this evening is permission to award that bid to Knox.
Okay, is there a motion to award a bid?
$111,000, sorry.
I thought that sounded kind of low. Like, wow, everybody could buy one of these. It is, it sounds like a big price tag, but we normally rent this type of equipment, and we've decided that it would be cheaper option to own a piece of the equipment ourselves and not have to pay rental fees, as everything, prices are going up for that too, so. So is there a motion to award the bid for the excavator?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any comment from the board? Public comment? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. This excavator will soon be ours. Next up is number four on the agenda, award the bid for Township Street Sweeping.
So for this bid, we had held an opening on April 7th at 10:00 a.m. The low bidder for the Township Street Sweeping was Riley Sweeping, and I'm going to double check the number one area this time. This was in the amount of $17,220. This year's bid, we did buy linear feet of township road throughout the township, and this will be our annual sweeping of the streets.
Okay. Is there a motion to award the bid for Township Street Sweeping?
So moved.
Second.
Second? Any comment from the board? Any public comment? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We will have our streets cleaned once this year. That's great. Next on the agenda is Lineville Elementary School. They sent us a request for a waiver of a permit fee.
I don't know if anyone is here from Lineville Elementary School, but we did receive the permit application for the construction of, well, a pre-constructed gazebo that is 14 by 20 to be placed at the Lineville Elementary School. Full outdoor, like an outdoor classroom area for the kids. The home and school had chipped in and wanted to purchase this from Waterloo Structures for their use. The permit fee is based on the estimated cost, which the permit fee comes out to $749.50. So they are requesting a waiver of that permit fee, since it's coming out of the Home and School Association Fund.
Oh, I have a picture of that, too.
The gazebo is actually going to be 14 by 20 and rectangular, but it will look similar to that with...
Yeah, so the Home and School Association raised money to purchase it, so the kids could have class outside, which this day and age is not a bad thing, just to disperse any viruses that might be going around. So is there a motion to waive the permit fee for the Lineville Elementary Home and School Association?
So moved.
Second.
Any comment from the board?
I do have a comment. I love this project. My kids go to Lineville Elementary School like a lot of our kids do, and I'm really excited to see some of their proposals for outdoor learning spaces, and especially as we've all just gone through this pandemic, realizing the importance of having some accessory spaces and out outside areas where kids can safely get some fresh air and just get a change of scenery, so I'm happy to support this.
Any comment or questions from the public? It's for Lineville Elementary School. The funds were raised from their Home and School Association.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Oh yeah, just so people online can hear us, too.
And just give your name and generally where you live.
Yes, Chris Mills, Money and Touching President and teacher at Lineville Elementary. I'm also coordinator of our garden club and active as a teacher liaison among the home and school. And I'm just here to thank you for entertaining the motion to have this be waived. We've been fundraising for a number of years to provide outdoor space for our students. This is a great time to be doing that, and it would serve multi-purposes for the community use, for the students that are there, scout troops, a number of reasons. We appreciate your entertainment.
Okay, great. Is there any other public comment about the gazebo at Lineville Elementary? Nope. All in favor of waiving the fee?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, whoops, I forgot to vote. Motion passes. It's hard with Bill on there, okay. So last item of business on the agenda is the Gray Farm. And I'm assuming that's why everybody is here in the room tonight, but we've been sort of having discussions about this proposal for a couple of years now, so I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to the applicant, so you can talk about, in case anybody misses it, while you're here, and what you're asking for.
We can't hear.
All right, let me start over.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Awesome.
Great. Good evening, Allison Zarro, on behalf of Worthington Partners Two, Inc., which is the equitable owner and applicant pertaining to a preliminary subdivision and land development plan for the Gray Farm. The Gray Farm is located at 1025 Worthington Road, on the north side of Worthington Road. Rhonda is on the west side of the property, and the Pennsylvania Turnpike is sort of on the northeast side of the property. It's approximately 71 acres. The property is zoned R1, and we had filed a preliminary subdivision and land development plan approximately two years ago, which Ms. Baumann mentioned. It has been the topic of discussion for quite some time. We've responded to several rounds of review letter comments from your consultants, and ultimately, we're proposing 73 single-family detached dwellings that would be on their own lots pursuant to the residential open space option. That is a cluster option in the R1 district, which requires a minimum amount of open space of 35%. We are proposing 48.6% open space on this plan. This plan would propose to have two access points. You can see on the screen, there's a main access point, which would be the primary access to the development at the intersection with Worthington Road and Stoughton Circle. There would be a secondary access, although, when I, to clarify, that is proposed on this plan to be a full access to Bowesman Road. However, overall, we think, just even from a traffic circulation perspective, most residents would access from the main entrance that is being circled on the plan. So we've, you know, we've gone through quite a number of comments, review letters and whatnot. We do have several third-party permitting approvals at this point as well. We received our planning module exemption from DEP on January 15th, 2021. We have an Aqua Will Serve letter, which was issued on July 31st, 2020. And I will note, the development is proposed to be served by both public sewer and public water. Ultimately, treatment would be handled via sewer at the Downingtown Regional Authority Plant. We have received our NPDS approval. This is an individual permit. And then finally, and probably the thing that's been the most topic of conversation, we have also been working with DEP regarding the proposed cleanup of the site. So as the board is aware, and I believe Ms. Obenski also, in her prior role as the EIC, has seen the large remedial investigation report and cleanup plan that was prepared by the developers consultant GeoTechnology Associates. Everybody says GTA, so I had to think about the full name, but that was submitted to DEP, and on March 10th, they approved that plan. In connection with that, we have submitted a request for a partial modification or waiver from two sections of the subdivision and land development ordinance, specifically Sections 511 and 5, excuse me, 406-1H6, which pertains to the timing of the proposed cleanup of the site. The report itself and prior studies identify that there are contaminated soils on the site. We are proposing to remediate that by full removal of the soil from the site. We have submitted a detailed, what I would call remediation and site development steps plan. Obviously, the report is much bigger, but in terms of how we would estimate the timeframes and the sequence, we've submitted a nine-page, or excuse me, a nine-step proposal that was dated February 23rd, 2022, and that was submitted to the township with responses to township consultant comments and our modification request letter. I note that we do have several review letters from the township consultants. The most recent one from your township engineer, EB Walsh, is dated February 26th, 2022. Broadly speaking, in all of the review letters, we are able to comply with comments. However, I did want to point out, in that review letter specifically, Mr. Daley has a comment at the end, as it pertains to this nine-step remediation process and timeline that we're proposing. He specifically asked whether we could clarify, under our proposed sequence, number seven, what we would intend to do once the soil is removed. So essentially, we're proposing that if the township were to grant the plan, and tonight, we're only in front of you for preliminary, first of all, we're not seeking final plan approval. But once, if the board were to approve the plan, the developer would post financial security. They would post financial security for not only the traditional land development improvements, but also with respect to cleanup. The NPDS permit still governs the sequence of everything in terms of soil remediation and then ultimate construction. We are estimating that the soil removal would take three to four months. And then we are proposing, and what happens then is that the environmental consultant has to prepare a report that gets submitted to DEP to ultimately get Act II approval, meaning that the site then is cleared in terms of no longer being considered remediate, no longer being considered environmentally, containing environmentally hazardous materials. We are proposing that underground work, because the earth will be opened up, and ultimately, the site can be balanced. Underground installation of utilities would proceed at the developer's own risk, or we would not do anything above ground, and so you would see in Mr. Daley's review letter, we are proposing what's listed on new comment number one on page 10, the second bullet point.
New comment?
Do you, do you have a?
I don't think I have a new. Oh, it did go out, it's in the packet? Oh, oh, I see. Dan Daley's comment.
Do you have an old version?
I think I'm missing a page.
Oh, there we go.
Look, it's signed though, right here. I must have an old one. Thanks, Dan.
So essentially...
Just this? Okay, that was just to clarify, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, since that was an either/or. The, the other thing we have done is we've appeared before the Planning Commission on numerous occasions. We've been in a continuing dialogue, I would call it, for the past few months. And the Planning Commission ultimately did recommend approval of the partial waiver requests and the, and the plan, preliminary plan approval at its meeting on April 6th, just last week. So I, I know there's a lot of information here, and I wanted to give sort of an overview summary, just to bring the board up to speed. I'm happy to answer whatever questions you have. I also have our consultant team here with me, including our civil engineer, who can also field questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Zarro. I don't have any questions as of right now. I've been following this for a couple of years, just like everyone else at the township, but so I don't personally have any questions. Laura, do you have any questions?
No, Ms. Zarro is correct. Thank you for that explanation. As you said, I'm familiar with the extensive documentation that has gone into this plan proposal, and I don't have any further questions this morning.
Bill, are you there?
Yes, I'm still here. No, I have no questions.
For the applicant? Oh, sorry.
At this moment, no.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as the applicant indicated, or as Ms. Zarro indicated, Worthington Partners Two, Inc., who's the applicant, has applied for preliminary subdivision and land development plan approval for a development known as Gray Farm, to consist of 73 lots for the construction of single-family dwellings and ancillary facilities and improvements. As part of the application, the applicant seeks a waiver from Section 511 and Section 406-1H6 to allow for a plan to be approved prior to the site being free of or having been remediated of environmental contamination and/or hazardous materials. If the board is so inclined, it can approve a resolution to approve the preliminary subdivision and land development plan and requested waivers with conditions that include, but would not be limited to, the following. And, and these are some of the conditions that the board could approve if, if they wanted to, if they were inclined to approve the application. The applicant shall comply with all township review letters, including the addition of the turn lanes of Worthington, on Worthington, addition of trail system sidewalks, cotlot, or other playground equipment for development residents. Following approval of a final land development plan for the property, there shall be no, there shall be a pre-construction meeting with the applicant, contractor's township, township engineer, and Conservation District prior to any earth disturbance, construction, or demolition at the property. The applicant shall grant unrestricted access to the township staff and its consultants for observation and inspection through the course of the building demolition, site remediation, site development, and construction process. Specifically, the applicant shall permit a township-assigned environmental consultant to observe said site work. All reports submitted to DEP related to the remediation of the property shall also be contemporaneously provided to the township. In addition, every 30 days from the date of final land development approval, the applicant shall provide township with a detailed report identifying the status of remediation and development at the property, which reports will be available for public review. While implementing the approved cleanup plan, the applicant may install underground utilities. Utilities at the site shall be designed and installed by the applicant to prevent the potential for vapor migration into residential structures, as well as the migration of contaminated groundwater into the utilities. No other earth disturbance, construction, or redevelopment activity shall occur at the property until after the applicant has remediated the property consistent with the laws and the regulations of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, including but not limited to Act II and the regulations adopted thereunder. And DEP has approved a final report for the soils and groundwater at the property in accordance with Act II and the applicable regulations. The applicant shall not construct or install any above-ground surface buildings or structures, including but not limited to... including but not limited to roads, other than temporary roads to support the remediation process, or blacktop until after DEP approves a final report for the soils and groundwater at the property. The applicant shall not apply for any building permits for buildings or structures at the property until after DEP approves a final report for the soils and groundwater at the property. There shall be a recordation of an environmental covenant pursuant to the Uniform Environmental Covenants Act, which shall include, but not be limited to, notice regarding contamination or remediation of the property and requiring residents to maintain vapor barriers and operate and maintain any vapor mitigation systems in perpetuity. Notice regarding the contamination or remediation of the property, the requirement to maintain vapor barriers and operate and maintain vapor mitigation systems, and any other obligations set forth in the environmental covenant shall also be contained in the Homeowners Association documents. In the event that a final report for the soils and groundwater at the property is not approved by DEP within two years from the date of this approval, the applicant will be required to stabilize the site and remove all utilities and other structures installed at the property. The applicant shall deposit an escrow, insufficient amount as determined by the township to fund stabilization of the site and the removal of all utilities and other structures installed at the property, in the event that DEP does not approve the final report for soils and groundwater at the property, or the project otherwise does not proceed. The applicant shall deposit twenty thousand dollars in an escrow account established by the township, the purpose of which is to fund the township's retention of an environmental professional, the selection of whom shall be at the township's sole discretion, to provide the township with guidance on the environmental issues applicable to the property, including remediation of the property and the redevelopment of the property. If the escrow account should fall below five thousand dollars at any time, the applicant shall replenish such fund to ten thousand dollars upon such occurrence or occurrences. At the time of the creation of the HOA, the applicant shall make a one-time non-refundable deposit of twenty thousand dollars into an escrow account to be solely, solely controlled by the HOA, which funds may be used only by the HOA to inspect and/or repair any vapor barriers and/or vapor mitigation systems required to be installed and/or operated in or under residential units at the property. The HOA document shall prohibit the HOA from expanding any of the funds escrowed prior to the declarant name therein relinquishing control of the HOA to the unit owners. So, Madam Chair, i- if the board so inclined to approve a resolution to, to grant the subdivision and land development plan and requested waivers, it can do so, and it can add these conditions and, and any others.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Freed. So is there a motion from the board to grant the waiver with the conditions outlined?
Are you, excuse us, are you not going to ask for any comments from the public before you?
Yeah, I, I apologize, I should have mentioned that upfront. So the, the normal process here.
Euclid, the township feed got muted.
Oh.
Thank you.
So there was a question about whether or not we were about to vote, but we will follow a process of ma- making a motion. Second, if a motion is made and seconded, then there will be time for board comment and then public comment, at which time, once all of the commentary is done, then there would be a vote. So that's why we're not asking for public comment at this moment. First, we need to have a motion on the table to have a comment on. So I just asked if there was a motion from the board to grant the applicant a waiver as outlined by Mr. Freed with all of the conditions.
And it would also would be to grant the, the land development and subdivision preliminary plan approval and along with the waivers, with those.
Right, right.
And others.
Yes, I'll make, I'll make a motion to, I'll, I'll make that motion as, as, as explained, with, with the conditions and others.
Okay, is there a second? No.
All right, the, the motion fails for lack of a second. Is there a motion? I- is there a motion to deny the application for preliminary subdivision and land development plan of Gray Farm?
So moved.
A second. Is there any comment from the board about this motion to deny the plan approval and waiver? Anyone?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'll make one comment, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
Bill?
Okay. Yeah, so, you know, I, I watched the, the video of the planning commission and been involved in, in planning commissions. I've read the meeting minutes and then discussed the plan with the township staff. I've read all the emails and messages that we've been sent from concerned residents, and I appreciate everyone's concerns about this development and, and the modification requests. I think regardless of how the vote goes, I think we all have the same goal in mind, which is to protect the safety and, and the health of the residents of this township, and to ensure that we have a responsible development of the land. So I, I think one thing we can all agree on is that regardless of how we get there, the remediation of the site is in the public interest in this township. I think most of us can agree that letting pollution sit on undeveloped land and unremedi- oh, excuse me, unremediated land, doesn't mean that the health risks are being avoided. You know, I, I personally have a history of where, where I was raised, where unremediated rent land around a naval base has caused, you know, thirty or forty years later, a lot of health, cancer, and, you know, immune diseases in the people who, where I grew up. And I know that leaving on the remediated land can cause, you know, severe illnesses that might not be detected for years. So I, I consider the risk of leaving, of leaving the property not cleaned up as, as a real risk, an active risk. I think that it's important that we, we, we work to get the site cleaned up at, at the highest priority. So, you know, the conditions that were mentioned earlier in, in the, in the motion that had passed, I, I think would have ensured that the objectives of this ordinance were for, for, were fulfilled. I believe that the conditions provided a more effective assurance than if we require, we require the literal following of the ordinance by rejection, rejecting the modification. You know, when I, when I think about this, how I, how I would think about granting a modification, you know, my, I have kind of four different things that I was thinking about you. Does strictly following the ordinance as written create an undue hardship on, on the developer? You know, the, the developer's claiming a hardship, partly through financial, financial hardship, I, you know, I, I can't confirm that, I don't, it's not particularly my job to, to make sure the project's profitable, so I, I'm not sure if this is a legal hardship. You know, I know the applicant is claiming, claiming that in part. I'm not, not sure that's convincing, but the second point I was thinking is the strict enforcement of the ordinance create an unreasonable or, or a needless barrier to achieving the objectives, objectives of the township. So does the ordinance require that, are we, are we requiring something that we just as effectively or even more effectively achieve by, by having this modification with the conditions that were just, were just read through as, as well as others? And I think that the conditions, if they were applied, would, would have, would have required that the remediation of the property occur before substantial construction, with the exception of some underground utilities in already broken ground, for the most part. And, and it ensures that the vast majority of the construction happens after the DEP plan is completed and, and approved, the, not just the plan of, of completely approved, but the actual activity approved. I think those conditions would also provide the township a much greater level of oversight and protection of the residents through access to daily, you know, if we wanted daily, daily access to the site, we would have an engineer who was funded through, through the, but through the developer, but at our discretion, confirming and reviewing, reviewing the process. I think the third thing I was category that I'm thinking about this is, is there a specific interest to the township and the residents to having this work done? And I think that, you know, having a contaminated site in the middle of a residential area is not, not something that we want in this township. And, you know, there's a real clear township interest in getting this done as quickly as possible and as effectively as possible. And then, you know, so I, I then I do those conditions when attached significantly reduce the harm or risk, or improve compliance and or act, you know, execution of the activity. And I think that had we considered those conditions in the, in the modification, we would have had a much higher level of insurance that, that we would be able to have a successful remediation and, and a high-quality development. With, with all that said, so clearly I was in support of, of providing a modification, but only with those conditions. So if, if the, with the motion currently on, on the table, which is approving or denying the request for modification without conditions, I'm going to vote no for, for on this. I plan to unless convinced by residents, although I suspect that that's not what the residential opinion will be, because I think those conditions provided us a much more favorable position for the township to get the, to get the public interest. So with that, I'll turn over my time.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Miller? I would disagree with Mr. Miller as far as this denial of the waiver does not mean that this piece of property cannot be cleaned up. It just means it has to be cleaned up as per our ordinance, meaning it's cleaned up first before there's a plan put in place for development of the property. It's cleaned up first before any other earth-moving activities or underground utilities are installed. The, the contamination at this site has been there for almost fifty years. The damage has been done, there, there's a huge plume under the ground that has contaminated the bedrock aquifer. What's left there in the soils that you're planning on removing with the plan, while it is detrimental, if you are in contact with it, it's not detrimental to the surrounding public as it sits there on the ground, in, in the ground undisturbed. It's not going to leach down any further into the aquifer. These things are in the soil, they're stuck in the soil. What would have leached down into the water has already been leached down into the water. And so in my opinion, the damage has been, the environmental damage has already been done. And this vote doesn't preclude that it ever gets cleaned up, the soils for development, but I would just like to see it done as per our ordinance, cleaned up first and then a plan put in place. Is there any other comment? Laura?
Could you, just a brief comment. I don't think anyone here questions the desire to have this land fully remediated so that we do not have to deal with this issue at all. Speaking as a supervisor, I take the health and safety concerns of the community as a top priority, and I have heard and gotten many comments regarding questions that are related to health and safety issues, not just on behalf of neighborhoods that are surrounding this area, but also on behalf of the seventy-three or seventy-two homes that will then be built on this property in the future. The reality is this property has been through remedial efforts in the past. It has reached the final report stage that we've referred to tonight, and it has failed. And so I would agree with Chairperson Baumann and just say that the health and safety risks I take very seriously, and while I would like to see this land cleaned up as a high priority, it has to be done in a way that we can ensure that those health and safety needs are properly addressed. Thank you.
Is there any more board comment? No. Is there any public comment? And I'll just have people come one at a time. Go ahead. Alexa, do you want to come up to the microphone, please?
Yeah, please just state your name and where you live.
Hi, my name is Alexa Manning. I'm a resident, can you hear me? Hi, my name is Alexa Manning. I'm a resident of Euclid Township, and I'm a volunteer member of the Environmental Advisory Council. I have a statement, and I apologize ahead of time because some of these issues have already been discussed, but I just wanted to go through some of the references that I have. So just bear with me. Since there isn't a podium, I'm, some papers. The advisory role of the Environmental Advisory Council, or EAC, is to make recommendations concerning protection, conservation, management, promotion, and the use of natural resources, including air, land, water resources, and comment on environmental issues associated with subdivision and land development applications and submissions. Identify environmental issues and problems, and recommend plans and programs for the conservation of natural resources, for the protection and improvement of the quality of the environment consistent with the township comprehensive plan. Make recommendations as to the possible environmental issues regarding the use of open land in the township, along with other powers granted in ordinance twenty eighteen dash oh two. The Euclid Township EAC has been discussing and following closely the environmental hazardous waste issues on the Gray property at our monthly meetings and updates from the township staff and other township committees for a couple of years at least. I would like to refer to the ordinance, section five eleven, environmental hazards. I'd like to read that briefly. The applicant for subdivision and/or land development approval, except for a revision to existing lot lines, shall demonstrate that the subject property is free of or has been remediated of environmental contamination and/or hazardous materials or waste. Such demonstration shall be made as part of the environmental impact assessment report required by section four oh six point one H six of this ordinance. No subdivision and/or land development shall be approved without compliance with this section five eleven. For purposes of this, and then repeating five eleven and four oh six one H six of this ordinance, quote hazardous materials, unquote, end quote hazardous waste, unquote, shall mean garbage, refuse, sludge, or other discarded material, which because of its quantity, concentration, or physical, chemical, or infectious characteristics, has been demonstrated to cause or, cause or significantly contribute to an increase in mortality or morbidity, or pose of substantial present or potential hazard to human health or the environment when improperly treated, stored, transported, disposed of, or otherwise managed. So I just wanted to read that.
Thank you. Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Is that all right? Sorry, bear with me. I'd like to ref, okay. On November first, twenty twenty-one, EAC sent a letter to the Board of Supervisors regarding the Gray Farm land development. The letter requests the opportunity to review any subsequent PDEP feedback on the remedial plan or subsequent work. Additionally, concerns stated are about soil sampling and testing, monitoring, and oversight of construction and digging activities, including air verification of the proper handling and disposal of the soil. The property has a public utility easement for a natural gas pipeline that is in close proximity to the proposed residential dwellings, yet there is no mention of how this easement may be affected by the proposed cleanup of the impacted soil or groundwater, how future construction, expansion, or maintenance activities within the utility easement by the utility company could be impacted by contaminants on the property resulting in environmental or health concerns for future residents. Has the remedial plan been reviewed and approved by the utility company, and is there a plan in place for future excavation activities that may be required by the utility company? And then I'm just going to skip down to the end of it. It says, prior to plan approval, the EAC strongly recommends the township receive a letter from the PDEP indicating the Gray Farm property has been successfully remedied to their satisfaction and can be safely developed for residential use. Okay. On December seventeenth, Gray Farm submitted the cleanup plan remedial investigation risk assessment to PDEP. On March tenth, the DEP approved the three submissions that this phase in the process. This pertains to Act Two, PA's land recycling voluntary cleanup program. This pertains to Act Two, PA's Land Recycling Voluntary Cleanup Program. The next step is for the consultant who works with the responsible party completes the soil remediation. They are obligated to submit the report. And that report will document amongst other things, results for post remediation soil samples. Following review of the report, the D E P issues a decision letter that will approve a report, disapprove a report, or issue a letter of technical deficiency.
Alexa, I'm sorry to interrupt. We have a lot of people here and I just don't, I just want to make sure everyone has a chance to speak.
Can I just get to one other part?
Sure.
Okay, I was just going to review the report from the D E P. I will skip all of that. Okay. This report states that there are environmental hazards in the property soil and water that will be addressed on the property and need to be approved by the D E P. I believe it is, uh, unwise to approve a waiver of the Township Environmental Hazards Ordinance and allow the property developer to begin construction activities until after the D E P's approval of the reports. In addition to these environmental concerns, there are other important land use concerns that the proposed planned, uh, subdivision of seventy-two or three houses on this property, the pipeline runs through the property. What type of, um, an amount of residential building is suitable for the site? The township has a clean energy resolution, twenty nineteen, for a hundred percent renewable energy future by completing the transition for one hundred percent clean and renewable energy electricity by twenty thirty-five, and a hundred percent renewable energy for heat and transportation by twenty fifty. The township municipal operations have an energy transition plan. We've looked to partner with developers and everyone in our community on clean energy. This is an excellent opportunity for new construction to incorporate energy efficiency and renewable energy. I look forward to speaking with Gray Brothers and other developers about this. What are the best options for land use in Euclid Township, especially with the few remaining large land parcels? The twenty twenty comprehensive plan has both general and specific recommendations regarding this. And there are specific ones for the Gray Brothers, and I don't have time to refer to them, but I have them listed. The decisions that our township, Euclid Township makes now regarding land use of this property and other properties are critical for the quality of life now and in the future here. This is the opportunity for the Gray family and the township leaders to work to solve and achieve what is best in this situation of a hazardous waste site that affects the entire community. I urge you to deny the waiver. I hope you will take this into consideration today and the days ahead with future land use decisions.
Okay. Thank you. And just as Alexa pointed out, we do have two advisory boards that, um, make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commission, which, as you heard, um, recommended approval of the plan, and the Environmental Advisory Council, which recommended that we do not, uh, grant the waiver or approve the plan. Um, is there any other public comment?
Joining us.
Oh, and do you have a lot of people online that are wanting to talk?
There are. So if you're in the lobby, please raise your hand for one.
Yeah, and so we'll take an in-person, then how about an online person? We'll switch back and forth. Does that sound good? Okay. Hi.
Uh, Bridget Delaney, Woodlock Farms. I just want to commend the board's decision to kind of delay and make sure that whatever we're doing, like you said, the property's been there for fifty years and it's been contaminated for fifty years. And living right across the street from this property and walking my dogs along the edge in Rhonda, um, it's really, and there's a playground so close to this property. I'm worried what's going to happen when we start to take the ground up, and I know a lot of that has been considered, but I'm also worried about the transparency already of the construction company. I spoke to an environmental geologist. I'm very fortunate. My best friend's mother is an environmental geologist. And I had her on the phone and I asked all these questions and she showed me where to look it up in the forty-five hundred page plan and, but there will never not be contamination on this site. That is a fact. And already we have the construction company telling us they can get rid of all contamination. That's like hashtag sketch. Sorry, but, um, that's not, that's not okay. And when we talk about earth disturbances on this property, I'm also wondering, we're very close to a pipeline on this property. And I know this board has seen questions about easements versus, you know, a lot of the homes in Marchwood are very close to the pipeline. And ultimately it was voted that we shouldn't have that one hundred and twenty foot easement. But when we're digging around a pipeline, especially on contaminated soil, and I know that they would do testing to see how far the contamination has spread, but I'm really concerned because you're going to have to dig fifteen feet down to get that dirt up. And like, we all want the remediation, but like you said, the bedrock hasn't changed. I'm just really concerned what effect that's going to have on the pipeline. And we've been talking about earth disturbances. Additionally, we're talking about utilities and removal of utilities. So what's going to get moved around close to that pipeline? And how is that going to affect, like, highly residential areas like Rhonda and Woodlock Farms are not tiny neighborhoods. They have a lot of people that live there. And I'm really just concerned about the health and safety risk. And I commend the board for so adequately putting health and safety first and voting not to allow construction before soil plans. Additionally, I know this is going to continue because they want to develop it. But I'm concerned about the traffic patterns when they come in and out to remove the soil. If there's an accident, God forbid, or something happens that's going to cause further pollution in other areas. And that pollution's already there and it's undisturbed. I would like this land to be used for something, but I do not think it should be used for development until we have a better remediation plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone online that has a comment? Is there anyone else in the room that wants to speak?
Hi, my name is Anne Plinus. I'm from Pine Creek Valley Homeowners Association. Again, thank you very much for protecting us. I also understand y'all have a job to do. You purchased this property. But when you purchased it, you knew what was on it. And you knew that it was going to be a challenge. That's your problem. That is not our problem. The gentleman that was spoke to the Township Commission Board said that he couldn't get the funding without getting this waiver. Again, that's not our problem. That's his business. That's their problem to deal with. Then somebody, um, very eloquently asked, why don't you do the, like we're asking, do the remediation first, then come back and say, hey, you know, this is the plan. We want to move forward. And his answer was all business. It had nothing to do with us. It was, well, then we'd have to start work and then we'd have to stop work and go through this all over again. Again, their problem, not our problem. That is their business. Construction is a start and stop business. There was the threat, and it was great because it truly was a threat that if you did not concede, that they would take this to appeals court. Well, as the township has never granted a waiver like this before, that wouldn't happen. I mean, sure, they can go ahead. It's going to, the judge is going to say, well, they've never granted it before. They have these reasons for not doing it. They wouldn't win. So the judge would see that that is also false. But again, if a company can't raise the money to start the construction without the waiver, how is he going to raise the money to also take the township to court? So again, I applaud everything that you are doing on behalf of the citizens. It's going to be built, folks. It's eventually going to be built. They own the land. It is zoned as residential. I think it's eventually going to happen, but I think there are proper ways to proceed. And I think exactly what you're asking for is what we need. So again, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just going to check in online. Is there anybody online that's raising their hand? Is there any other public comment? Come on up to the microphone.
Uh, Ben Reisler, Rhonda. You'll be happy to know that I left my three and a half pages of notes over there.
Thank you.
And thank you. I think that I'm going to be, assuming this goes the way that it looks like it's going to go. I want to thank the board for doing what's in our best interest. I'm going to be happy to report the results to the, uh, six hundred and eight homeowners that, uh, my association represents. And that, you know, they're, they're homeowners, they're neighbors, they're voters, they're taxpayers. And they're our member, they are members of this community. And this is what we want. We know that it's going to get developed at some point. We just want to have the input that we need to make. So, thank you. I will cede my time.
All right. Thank you. Monica.
My name is John Sprowl. I live in, uh, Pembroke Court, Rhonda. I also want to thank you for your comments and, uh, and consideration here. Just one thing I want to bring up, uh, in regard to the Planning Commission meeting, uh, and the ordinances that we have here in, in Euclid. I have a little bit of a background in landscape construction. Uh, one of the things I, I wanted to also have considered, uh, moving forward, uh, I, I agree that we should have this developed at some point following proper protocols. The tree counts and so forth in the woodland areas are at, uh, the, the ordinance is twenty-five percent or more. They need to replace trees. They seem to be at twenty-four point eight. Uh, I looked at the hedgerow along Bowlsman. There is no tree count there on the plans currently what I saw. So I want to make sure that the tree counts and the preservation of the woodlands are accurately accounted for. And if not, then they follow the proper protocols, uh, should have been forward in, in the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any more public comment?
Yes, I, I just have a question.
Maggie Quinn.
Yeah. I know. Euclid Township, uh, I just have a question, um, about the homes when they are eventually built after every, the soil's clean. Um, will they have walkout basements or sump pumps? Either one of those two things I.
I, I don't think we can, I mean, if we reject that, that I don't think there's a plan in front of us. I don't think we can comment on that.
Who's talking?
Okay.
Uh, someone online. But yeah, that would be a question if there was a plan, if there was a motion to approve the plan as it is.
Okay. The other one was I heard vapor barrier. What does that mean? The houses underneath? Uh, maybe this is for later. But they have to put a vapor barrier under the foundation?
Yeah, I think that, that is another question that would be more relevant.
I'll, I'll hold those questions until we get further on. Thank you so much.
I don't know if we're going to get further on. That was a condition. That would be part of the conditions for.
Hold, hold on a second, dude.
That's Bill.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's me. I'm allowed to talk, right? No, I was just going to say that was one of the conditions of, if, if we're going to go with the modification, that was one of the proposed conditions, that the houses be built with vapor barriers or vapor modify, uh, mitigation, uh, technology.
Okay, and that would be probably, we discuss that after the, the, um, land is clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh.
Sorry, Bill.
That's okay. We're all still getting used to hybrid. Is there any other public comment? There's somebody right here.
My name's Timothy Delaney. I also live in Woodlock Farm. My biggest concern is that I don't want the earth opened, or as you say, disturbed. So that kind of gets to the whole crux of it. If you can't dig up the land to remediate it, then you're never going to get to the point of a development plan. So the whole idea is if you start churning up that land, as we've all agreed, I understand they'll use water to mediate it and keep it down, but then that's going into the groundwater, the creek at the bottom of the hill there, Pine Creek. Ultimately, the water's going to carry any of that disturbed, toxic material along the way. I'm a firm believer if it's buried and it's undisturbed, that we as a community are much safer than if we start digging it up and exposing it to the air and necessarily any sort of dust or wind or anything that's going to blow into Rhonda or Woodlock Farm or any other of the surrounding communities, the, uh, I forget the name of Autumn Development that's on the other side of it. So, you know. So the idea is if you keep it contained and you keep it in the earth, then everybody lives with what it is. I mean, that's not going to change, right? So that whole idea is if you don't disturb the land, that we never get to the development plan. And that's kind of sort of where my mindset is. Keep it buried, let it be, and let somebody else, future generation, when maybe technology's different or better or something like that, can go ahead and address it. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you. Um. Is there any, oh, here comes somebody.
First of all, my name's Robert Collins. I live in Nylund Court and the woods and the farm are right behind me. My concern is, uh, don't we have to have a certain amount of green space?
Yes.
For runoff. And it looks like there isn't enough run, runoff space there. Right behind my place, when it rains, we get flooded in there. And this could really accentuate the problem.
Okay, well, like, so right now there's a motion that's been seconded to deny the, the plan as it is. So if you have a comment on this plan, I guess it would be better if the motion, if we fail to vote to deny the plan. Does that make sense? Okay. Um, as, well, the Gray Brothers' proposal is the topic right now. And the motion is to deny the approval of the plan and deny granting a waiver. Uh, we haven't voted. We're still listening to public comment, but, um, so if you have any comment relative to whether. Yeah, if, on this plan, yeah. So right now the, the vote or the motion is to deny this plan. Just in the, in the interest of time. And just to be clear, the, this land can be, still be remediated. It's just the, the ordinance is, the way they are written, call for the land to be remediated first before a plan is approved. And that's what we're in, basically not granting a waiver to let them proceed with the plan at the same time as remediation. So, go ahead.
If I may, um, just, just to clarify a couple of things. I know the EAC was reading a statement and they, and I know she was trying to truncate it. She had, she had provided a comment letter from November, which we had responded to
Yes.
on November fifth and had clarified some of those comments. I also wanted to point out that your comprehensive plan does, which was a date that was just adopted in twenty twenty, does actually contemplate this being developed as proposed in terms of the residential open space requirement. But I do hear what the board is saying about, um, the, the sequence and the timing. Um, and so I would ask at this point if there is anything, and, and, and we understand, I, I think I'm pretty clear on Mr. Miller's position. Um, I don't know if there's anything in specifically that we could address to further address sequence from your perspective, uh, the two of you, um, that we could address, even if it's not something that we would decide tonight. But to further address perhaps a different way to handle this. Um, I understand that you're not, you're not, based on your comments tonight, you are obviously not interested in approving this plan with a final plan in place. But if there was something else that we could discuss, uh, we would be, you know, willing to table this if the board was to, to further explore that.
So let me, let me try and, uh, address, because based on, on the motion that's currently on the table, my understanding is at least what, what was made and seconded as a motion. Um, and, and I think to, it probably answers the question about what, um, the board, or at least the majority of the board seems to be looking for. It's, it's to, to, is, particularly with regard to sequencing, it's to complete the remediation, um, in accordance with the ordinance. And once the remediation's complete, and obviously you have your D E P approvals, so, uh, you know, subject to getting a township grading permit, you can proceed with the remediation, um, based on the sequencing that, that's been provided. Relatively speaking, shouldn't take that. Based on the sequencing that, that's been provided, it relatively speaking shouldn't take that long to complete. And then at that point, I think we'd ask it, you come back with, with a plan to develop, which, you know, under the ordinance, once the site's deemed clean, and again, it's, there was a comment about what, what's clean, that's, that's one of the, the great debates about how clean is clean. But under, under state statutes, if you're below either certain generic thresholds or certain site-specific thresholds, you're considered clean. Once you achieve that and DEP issues an approval, what's known as a final report, then you could come back for a plan, assuming that this motion passes.
Yes.
Just further into what Allison was mentioning, what Mark was just discussing. Rather than, there's, there was a lot of comments made, some of which I think was inaccurate, and I need some clarification. But, you know, instead of sort of commenting on some of those things, and also I didn't hear all of what Mr. Miller was saying about under, what he would be looking for in terms of remediation prior to approving some sort of a modification or waiver to, to move forward with the development. I think in light of some of the comments and what Mr. Miller said, that there's still, I think, some confusion about what we're trying to do, what the effects are and the contamination. I think maybe some further discussion with the board and with the residents, obviously in function with them, would be helpful to maybe clarify some items. So I think maybe what we could do is just table this discussion for now. We can certainly, as we've done over the last two years, have, you know, do a thirty-day extension to just make sure-
Please let one person talk at a time, thank you.
Just make sure that, that there wasn't, I think I was hearing some, there was some discussion that Mr. Miller was saying and other people were saying that might, there might be a way that we can get this done that would satisfy most of the concerns. I'm sure we can't satisfy everybody's, but from what I'm, the overriding concerns I'm hearing. So I think my suggestion would be that we do a thirty-day pause and have discussions during that thirty days in hopes that we can get a resolution. If we can't, we'll be back here and the, the resolution can be certainly voted on again. But in the meantime, let's maybe put our heads together and see if there's a way to do it to sort of try to do something that everybody can, can live with, right? In some situations, you can't, it's not always a win-win for everybody, but if everybody gets, you know, most of what they want. And believe me, when it comes to environmental, I'm not, this is not sort of roughshod. I mean, we have put a tremendous amount of effort over the last, I mean, the application's been two years. But two years prior to that, we've been working on this property with the owners. A lot of work went into it. Ms. Sabinski, you know, I mean, you know what goes into those reports, you know, you've seen them. So that, I think we don't take that lightly, and, and I don't sort of hope people think that. There's a lot that goes in, into those reports. So I think maybe just in fairness of trying to see if there is a common ground, I ask that maybe we could just take a thirty-day, another thirty-day extension just to see if we can. If we can't, we can't. But I think from what I'm hearing, I think there may be, may be a way. And I'd hate for us to do something then that sets something in motion that, you know, we don't, is just no, for no reason. I just don't think that's, doesn't serve anybody.
So I, and, and obviously I'll, that'll be up to the board to decide. I'm, I'm, just want to, so clarify a couple of things. Obviously, the public comment is the public comment, not the board comment.
I'm not confused, by the way.
Yeah, well, okay, I'm, okay, please. I, I mean, I understand Mr. Miller's points. He had, he had made the motion to, to approve based on the conditions. What I understood him to be saying was with the conditions, he was satisfied that this could proceed. That didn't, motion didn't pass. I think we have a motion on the table based on the understanding, and I, and I don't think there's any confusion about this, that, that- Hold, hold on a second, hold on a second. That there's, that the, that there would be site work, including particularly utilities being placed on the site prior to the site being deemed, well, I'll say cleaned for shorthand, by DEP. And I don't think that's changed, has it?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is what I'm hearing and some, a bunch of the reasons why the proposal for the waiver, as you read it, did not get a second, that there are, I think, are some things in there that maybe we can clarify or maybe talk about that gives more comfort to maybe get a resolution that everybody can work with. That's, that's what I'm sort of saying. I'm not, you know, there was a lot said, and I understand there's, this is very intricate. This is not straightforward. We're talking about a site that has been contaminated for a number of years. And I think we all, as everyone stated, want to get it remediated. And I think we should not, it'd be nice to try to find a way where we can get that done. I obviously have ulterior motives, not necessarily that makes them bad. But, but my first primary objective is, is to get it cleaned up, which I think is everybody's objective. So in, in that way, I think we are, we are aligned in, in terms of that. And I think having it cleaned up, as Mr. Miller said, is much better than not having it cleaned up, because nothing good comes from contamination continuing in the soil. Eventually, it will, it will come to the surface. It's just, that's just a fact of, you know, nature. Ms. Sabinski maybe can agree with me or disagree, but, I mean, eventually, you know, ground moves and, and things get exposed. And so I just would, I just ask that if there was a way we could maybe just talk about that further and see if there's a way we can get that done, great. If in thirty days we find that there wasn't any common ground, or there wasn't a way for me to make a modification and you guys to agree to something a little bit different, I understand. But I would hate to, I would hate to, us in a short period of time, having just come before you after, you know, going through all the work with the DEP to, to not try to figure out a way that we can make that, make that-
Well, again, I'll, I'll turn that over to the board. I, I would, I, I think I, I might differ on the, the short period of time comment, given how much time, how many extensions have already been written, how much conversations there have been. But with that said, I'll, you know, it's up to the board.
Mr. Kessler, I do appreciate your willingness to share those comments and be contemplative about where we can find a common ground. Like I said before, I don't think there's any question about anyone's desire to have the land remediated. With that being said, unless the solution that you plan to bring for me to make a vote on within the next thirty days is an approved final report from the DEP, I don't have any confusion on the matter, and I'm prepared to move forward with the vote.
Well, as I said, you know, I am the equitable owner of the property, but there are other parties, obviously, who have an equal amount of, this will have an equal amount of effect on them, the Gray family. Where there are numerous, numerous people who are part of the Gray family that this will affect. So I just ask, you know, do we do that so that I can confer with them and see if there's something we can come back to and that, that satisfies?
I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment before we take a vote?
Good evening. My name is Bill Burke, and I do not represent the developer, but I do represent the Gray family. I would like to make a couple of points. I'm a real estate lawyer. I work with developers. Our firm represents townships. We have seen environmentally challenged properties redeveloped successfully over the years. And that has always been done in the context of some approved plan for redevelopment that makes it valuable, that enables the developer to finance it. The Grays are not wealthy people. This property is owned by at least three, and I think maybe four now, generations. Three and four generations removed from the folks that caused this contamination. They don't have money. They can't do this. Without the approval to enable the financing to take place, your objective and ours won't get satisfied. I, I'm trying to understand why we're calling it a waiver, but it's really a timing modification, right? I mean, they're agreeing, we're not going to build houses, we're not going to do anything until this site's cleaned up. We're gonna put, maybe put in some utilities in connection with the site work, but we're going to clean it up. And you're not going to give us a building permit until we come to you with a final act-two report. That sounds like a win-win for everybody, and I'm trying to understand why the board wants to deny it. I just don't get it. And you're, and, you know, my clients are participating, you know, this is not the biggest win for them. They are participating in some very, this is a substantial remediation cost. This is a lot of money, and a lot of it's coming out of them. But it's not coming out of anybody, and it's not going to fit, clean up the dirt without the ability to finance. I think everybody here is sophisticated and understands that banks don't lend money on properties that have no value. And an environmentally contaminated property without these approvals is not an attractive piece of collateral. So I'm just urging the board to consider essentially taking yes for an answer and considering the impact of this on a family where, like I said, we're talking about three and four generations of people who had nothing to do with this. And who, and who are not, you know, who are not wealthy people, so.
Thank you.
Hello? Hi, this is Kathleen McCormick. I live in Autumn Drive. I back up to the Gray Farm, and I have been holding my tongue. First of all, thank you for requiring or, or not allowing a waiver. I, we, you clearly have heard the public is against wa- waiving the ordinance. I certainly am supportive of people being able to develop their land, but they need to follow all the rules and regulations of our township, and there should be no exceptions. We are not rich here either, just like the Grays. And we can be very, very severely harmed by not following the, the regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment, either in the room or online? Last call for public comment? And, and I'll just say that I've received many, many emails. We've heard, listened to lots of residents tonight, and we've listened to them over the past couple of years. And I have not received one supportive comment to, from the public to approve this waiver. So I'll just put that out there. And so I, I'm, I'm well aware of the, the motion that Mr. Miller made and the why I can't think of the word?
Conditions.
Conditions, thank you. The, the conditions that he proposed, and, you know, so I'm, I'm clear with what I am voting, how I'm voting tonight. So just, that's all I have to say. So I'm going to call a vote. All in favor to deny the waiver and the preliminary plan approval of the Gray Brothers' property?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Bill, are you going to vote?
I, I voted aye. I, I'm, I'm not going to vote approval without the conditions.
What did he say?
Alright, I'm said I'm not going to vote. I, I voted to accept the motion because I'm not going, I don't want to approve the motion without the conditions. Approve the modification without the conditions. So I voted with you guys.
Was that an aye or an aye? I just need to know.
That's an aye. A vote to deny the way-
It's a unanimous vote.
Okay, alright, motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. No need to work on it, but. With all that, I lost my agenda. Moving on to announcements. All meetings will be at the Township Building unless otherwise noted. And just to be clear, there will be time for open public comment for anything the public wants to talk about at the end of these announcements. April fourteenth, Historical Commission will meet at seven thirty PM at the Cadwalader House. April fifteenth, Euclid Township Industrial Development Authority will meet at nine AM here at the Township Building. April nineteenth, Community Day Committee, seven PM. April twentieth, Zoning Hearing Board, seven PM, decisions regarding four, four oh one Valley Hill Road and eight fifty-four Tremont Drive. On April twenty-first, the Environmental Advisory Council will have their workshop meeting at seven PM. May second, Park and Recreation Committee is at seven thirty PM. May fourth, the Planning Commission will meet at seven thirty PM. And May ninth, Board of Supervisors will meet here again at seven thirty PM. Again, all meetings are open to the public, and the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors meetings are held hybridly. All the other ones, you have to come in person. And with that, I'll open it up to any public questions or comments that have nothing to do with what we've already talked about. Hi.
Locking on to Lineville Station Road.
Hi.
Bear with me for three more minutes. I know it's pretty late already. The easy one, Byers Road, while I understand it's a state road, it's in terrible repair. South side between Lineville Station Road and where it works for Township Line. Is there something we can get your road people or whatever to light a fire? The contacts I had at PennDOT have expired with my retirement. And, you know, there's seven generations of paving. All they're doing is paving over-
Yeah.
I'm sure Scott.
Yeah, if Scott, you want to mention, I mean- If we had a magic wand to make PennDOT do what we want them to do, that would be nice.
I just want to get it in front of you one more time.
Absolutely. We, yes.
And then the other thing I have, as you're aware, there was agreement of sale on the Lineville Station Road property, the formerly Seaman's property, the school district owns. That has been, that agreement of sale's been terminated.
With Carvana, you mean? Yes.
Terminated their agreement.
Yes.
There was a second offer. That's up to the Land Committee of the School District and School Board working towards that. But with that cue moment comes the concern that we are paying attention to what's going to happen next and that we disabuse people earlier than Carvana wasting time doing era flyovers and complete surveys if in fact they can't make their, make it work. Understanding we have a new ordinance that would be applicable to that property for the setbacks along the pipeline.
Yes, I'm not aware that there is a pipeline easement on that property?
It's on my property. It runs right up-
Oh, is there? On the north end? Okay, okay.
We're too anxious. They've dug them up before.
Okay.
Not that I'm worried about them. I mean, it's fine. So it is what it is. And, you know, with, with that, are, or is there any exploration or is there a standing committee to explore any ways of maybe not developing that farm? Or at least, or turning around and looking at it and saying, you know, Carvana was going to shove everything up against Mr. Matthews' farm only because it was higher. Whereas if somebody's going to do it, it's only his own PIC.
Right.
So it's always going to be warehousing like they do on Happy Days anyways. Why isn't it up against the term?
Right.
If we're going to do that.
And I'm in, yeah, I see your point, and there is a conservation easement on Mr. Matthews' property. We would love to, if the school district wanted to donate that land to the people of Euclid Township, they are, we'd welcome it. It's just, it's not, we don't own that piece of property, so.
Yeah, but it's certainly a conversation we had. Friendship, trust can be contacted. I'm working with the school district as well, talking to those people.
Yeah.
I worked for them previously.
Okay.
So, you know, we'll, we'll see what will happen, but I want it to be on everybody's radar that-
It's, it's on everybody's radar. Great, thank you. Is there any other public comment unrelated to previous business?
This is Earth Month, and we're having a cleanup. Thank you to our supervisor Laura for starting this last year with the EIC. It's on Tuesday, the nineteenth, at four o'clock. It's, we're getting supplies through PennDOT, and if we could have that posted at some point on the website, we would like the public to part- and if we could have that posted at some point, um, on the website, we would like the public to participate. We have bags, vests, everything.
Great, awesome, thank you. So... We will, we'll post it on the website. We'll, we will post the information on our website and on social media, so, um... With that, is there any other open comment from the public?
Yes, I have one more. Sorry, Margaret Quinn.
Excuse me, I can't hear who's speaking. Look at your... Oh, I can hit the gavel. That's fun. They, they're such good listeners. I don't even need to do that.
Um, I just wanted to say if they do start cleaning up the site, um, could we have better communicate, communication than we did with Sunoco? Could they please, um, can the Township send out notices when they are remediating so that we know when we're walking our dogs and we're jogging and we're doing all that, you know, that they're working on soil and, um, you know, that we're warned not to be in that area, whatever.
Okay, thanks, Maggie. Good point.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else before I motion to adjourn? Oh. Almost forgot.
I just want to let everybody know that we got, planning commission thought that they came before us as a good idea. We have six to seven people on the...
Can, I don't know that people are going to be able to hear you on the...
Yeah, Dennis, do you want to come with the microphone? Too bad.
Lineville Station Road Planning Commission. Uh, the members of the Planning Commission did approve, not approve, we recommended what they were coming to you. We felt it was the best. Everyone's saying that no one, everybody's complaining. We thought, as a group of people of broad range, that it was the best we were going to come up with to try to get things done. Um, I'm not going against, you guys did what you did, we did what we did. I just want people to know that our commission considered, thought about it, studied. We just didn't blow it off lightly. We tried to do our job.
And now...
That's all I'm going to say.
Um, I just want to thank you, Dennis, and all of the Planning Commission volunteers, all the volunteers on all of our committees. I know you guys are all doing the best job, you know, for the citizens of Euclid Township, so I appreciate the work that you're doing, and there's no hard feelings. Not everybody agrees on stuff, and it was definitely a split vote, as you, as you saw, so I guess it didn't end up being split, but whatever.
Yeah, it, it ended.
Yeah, these things happen. Yep.
And it is what it is. I just, I just want people to know that we, as a commission, thought it was a good, good way to go.
Yep, okay, thank you. If there's no more public comment, I will make a motion to adjourn.
So much.
Uh, all in favor? I think we lost Bill already. Aye, all right. Good night, everybody. Thanks for coming.